Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education of March 26, 2018. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on March 22, 2018 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call?
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafonte, Mr. Cooper, Ms. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Paulsifer.
Here.
Dr. LaSalle.
Here.
Ms. Trillo.
Here.
Mrs. Hopps.
Here.
We have a call.
Great. Our next motion is to go into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matters to be discussed are personnel matters, matters of contract negotiation, and matters falling within the attorney-client privilege. Two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Slow.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session. Okay, we're ready to go back. First, I'd like to -- we're back from executive session, and I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky.
Yeah.
Ms. Santafonte. Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Paulsifer.
Here.
Dr. LaSalle.
Here.
Ms. Trillo.
Here.
Mrs. Hopps.
Here.
We have a call.
Will everybody please rise for the pleasure of the audience?
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America, in its republic, in its land, my nation, under God, in the beautiful, in liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, first, we have approval of regular minutes from the March 12, 2018 board meeting. May I have a motion for the approval of those minutes, please?
Slow motion.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Stay. Motion passed.
Thank you. We've accepted our correspondence, and we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm pleased to share some wonderful news from around the district with our board and community members this evening. Last Thursday, Hillsborough Middle School student group, AWARE, standing for Advocating Wellness through Addiction Resources and Education, presented the AWARE Fair, a night of information and conversation. This evening's program was designed by the AWARE students, four parents, and students in grades five through 12, to attend together, and it focused on all areas of wellness. The event marked the 20th year that the Hillsborough Middle School peer leaders sponsored a family night of dialogue, which included a skit performed by the AWARE members. This year's skit was entitled Wellness TV. Thank you to these peer leaders, as well as the advisors, Mrs. Mayer, and Ms. Stein, for organizing a fantastic night of conversation for the community. Thank you also to the many members of the staff who also intended to provide wellness information and participate in the conversations, including Dr. Trubisky, Mrs. Lorraine Borwit, Mrs. Krista Williams, Mrs. Minda Maggio, and Mrs. Valerie Newman. Let's give them a big round of applause. This year, staff members from the Hillsborough branch of the Somerset County Library System have been visiting our schools to train our students and teachers to assess or to access library services, including digital media and online resources, as well as provide information on various activities and services available at our local library. This year alone, library staff members have registered over 1,100 students in grades three through six with their own library card. They visited Hillsborough schools 36 times and conducted 54 training sessions and trained 88 staff members and over 1,100 students. These are great statistics. All of our elementary and intermediate school students must read as part of their daily assignment. The fact that our local library staff is able to provide our students with an endless supply of reading materials as well as resources is fantastic. Thank you to the Hillsborough branch of the Somerset County Library System for all they do for our students, and thank you also to the many staff members who have opened up their classrooms to these training sessions. Congratulations also goes out to Hillsborough High School Health and Physical Education Teacher and Strength and Conditioning Coordinator, Mr. Jim McFarlane. Jim was recently nominated for the National Strength and Conditioning Association's High School Strength and Conditioning Coach of the Year Award. This award is given to a coach in recognition of his or her achievements and work on behalf of the high school coaches in the advancement of strength and conditioning. Jim not only trains our high school athletes, but also offers his strength and conditioning programs to students in grades five through eight as well. He has researched, written, and co-authored countless studies and articles. Jim will be presenting his most recent research on the effect of a six-week fitness program to improve athletic preparedness, physical literacy, and to provide implications for all youth activity organizers at the 2018 Long-Term Athlete Development Summit to be held on May 5 and 6 at Newman University in Pennsylvania. Congratulations to Jim on this well-deserved honor, and thank you for all you do for your student athletes, both in and out of season. And I also want to spend a little bit of time updating the board and the community on some of our security efforts that we've been making since our last board meeting and before then. We have been interviewing security firms. These are school K through 12 firms that focus in on school security. We just had a conversation, Mr. Mahmood and myself, as well as Mr. Volpe, with the Executive Director of Safe Davin's International. This is a firm that specializes in school security. They currently are working with Warren Public Schools, Montgomery Schools, and we will be receiving a proposal for their services that include security audits, recommendations for additional training. They also do security and policy reviews for the district, as well as security consulting. That's one of the things that we've been working on. This is now the second firm that we have met with, and we will be securing one of the firms in short order. The police visibility, second thing that we're doing. Chief Powell and I had a very good conversation last week about how can we increase the visibility and accessibility of Hillsborough Township police officers in our schools. And he was kind enough to work with the school district with the goal of having a police officer visit every school, at least every day. And the officer will check in at the front office, will walk the hallways, as well as check out before he or she leaves the building. We are very appreciative of the Hillsborough Township Police Department for prioritizing public schools during their patrols, and we do have an officer in the back. Let's give them a big round of applause. Another thing that we're working on is we ascribe, and I think that this is a national push, to if you see something, you say something. And our kids, our students in our classes, use apps a lot. They have it on their phones. And the county prosecutor, Mr. Mike Robertson, has recommended that Somerset County public schools look at an app called Stop It. The Stop It app is an app that allows people from the community to actually record and submit an anonymous tip to police and school officials. This app is currently being used in the North Plainfield Public School System, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback from them. So we are anticipating that we're going to move forward with the Stop It app at the high school within the next few weeks, and we'll keep you well apprised of the progress in that area. Office of Emergency Management. We've been working with John Sheridan, who's the head of the Office of Emergency Management in Hillsborough Public Schools. He actually oversees and gives us feedback on our drilling procedures. He has also volunteered his time to work with our leadership team on doing what's called desktop drills. These are activities where administrators and some other school security specialists sit around the table, and they go through a particular drill that's difficult to drill in real time. Drills for things like lunchtime preparedness, or the beginning of the school day, a drill during arrival, or a drill during dismissal. He has expertise in this area, and we very much appreciate his willingness to work with our leadership team to move forward in that area, and to drill in a way that is facilitated by a professional with his expertise. Also, we have a visitor policy. We also have a school security policy as well. The Operations Committee has been reviewing those things. We're going to continue to inform our policy development process now with our private-sector partners that we're going to be contracting with soon, but we want to make sure that the people who come into our schools are the people who should be coming into our schools, and make sure that any changes to that procedure from what we're doing now is vetted through security professionals. Another thing that we're working on, set the high schools. It's unique to the high school. There are times when our students have to walk out of the main part of the building into another part of the building, and they actually walk outside in order to get from one part of the building to another. We do have a duty teacher that's posted at that time. However, the duty teacher gets there typically not during the passing time, because they are actually passing from one class to another as well. So we have -- I authorize the supervision of that particular area with an additional staff member, and that's happening immediately. Also, what I'd like to share with you that doesn't have to do with security is our calendar. We have a makeup day that's now scheduled for April 6, right? So we're all going to be in school April 6, but it's going to be a half-day for students and staff. So we're going to be sending out information to our community and our staff to indicate that March -- I'm sorry, April 6, that Friday, which is the last day of spring break, is going to be a half-day for students and staff. And I think that about those.
I just have one thing to say. I went to see Shrek on Sand Bay, the middle school, and let me tell you something. These kids are amazing. The nice thing about this play is that there were a ton of kids who were able to participate. And I have to say that the leads of Shrek and Fiona were Broadway quality. They were wonderful, and the place was packed. It was standing room only, and there was a particularly wonderful performance by Max Cooper, son of Brett, as one of the three little kids. So it's just a wonderful experience, and I thank all the people involved. I think Barbara Sabo is the director, manager, everything, for the middle school theater group, but it was a wonderful experience. And that's it for me. So we move on to committee reports.
Actually, if I may, I'm not sure, but in deference to the Chair, tonight, we're going to be presenting the tentative budget, and I do have a presentation. If you'd like me to go through it now, I'll be more than happy to before public commentary, because there may be comments from the public, or we can wait until after committee reports.
Which is of the board?
I just want to make sure I may go through it before public commentary.
Okay.
I think we should go through it, because then we could admit the budget portion, or at least we could see the budget portion of our committee reports.
Okay.
I definitely agree with you on the idea of writing a public presentation, so if there are additional questions, stay with that regularly.
Okay, very good. You're on.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to be presenting the tentative budget for this school year 19, or the 2018 school year. We begin our budget development process in October of this academic year, where principals and department heads submit their budget requests to Mr. Mahmood and myself. We go through it. We make some decisions, some reductions, maybe even some adjustments to it, and then we begin the process of sharing out the budget requests to each of our three standing committees, the Education Committee, Operations Committee, and Human Resources Committee, during the months of February and March. They at that point review all of the budget requests and give input administratively to me as I and Mr. Mahmood, as we continue to develop the tentative budget. On March 15, the Ides of March, we received school aid, and unfortunately, Hillsborough was one of few districts throughout the state of New Jersey that really received very, very little additional school aid. There was about $280 million of additional spending that came into direct state aid from Trenton this year. Unfortunately, Hillsborough received only about $3,200 additional dollars, which makes this budget particularly difficult. On March 20, the Operations Committee met and reviewed the tentative budget. I actually presented this in draft form to them and collected their ideas, and some of that is reflected in this presentation. And then tonight, the board is going to vote on the tentative budget. You can see in the agenda, it's basically a total amount that the board is going to look at, and I'll go through what this covers at this particular point in time. And then, between now and late April, the committees will meet, will continue to get public input for the next month or so, until the board has to strike its final budget and vote on it April 30. So that's the final budget, when we will have our final budget hearing, and then the board will vote at that point in time. So what does this budget have in it? This budget has resources for new social studies materials, supplies, curriculum writing, and training. Each year, we rotate a different curriculum area. It is supervised by the supervisors, as well as Dr. Antounas, and this year is, or next year, is social studies will be the focus. We are putting into the budget a new Student Assistance Counselor, a SAC. We heard a great deal of public comment about that, and we're trying to be responsive to the needs that have been expressed by our community, as well as making some additional security investments. Currently, this budget has about an additional $50,000 that we're going to budget moving forward into next year. How we're going to particularly spend those dollars, we're going to wait until we get the feedback from our experts in those areas. We also have a new American Sign Language position that's there. One of the wonderful things is that our new American Sign Language program has just blossomed, and we need additional resources in that area to continue the good work going on as our students develop their sign language skills. We are also putting in a new HVAC maintenance position. This is a maintenance position that will specialize in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning in our district. Our cost drivers are really nothing new. They're the drivers that drive all public school systems. Salary increases, healthcare costs, special education increases, as well as transportation. Special education in particular this year is, and moving into next year's, is a driver, and we'll go through some of those cost increases. We spend a lot of time trying to manage these costs. We have -- our employees now contribute over 20% of the premium cost for that. That offsets significantly the cost of our healthcare. We have a revenue generating program that's been very successful in the district. That's the Children at Play program, that generates additional revenues that allows us to keep more teachers than having to let go. Mr. Mahmood and Ms. Zalinski also work hard at creating purchasing agreements and working with cooperative purchasing agents in order to minimize the cost, because we're purchasing at economies of scale. This year, we're also going to receive revenues from the federal government for something called E-rate. E-rate are costs that are offset for certain technology, telecommunications technologies. And the new HVAC position, we anticipate is actually going to save us money, because we are spending a good deal contracting out a lot of services, and this will help us also with our preventative maintenance work. This is very important, this slide. This shows all of the personnel net increases and decreases. I first want to start off in current year. These are positions that were budgeted for, that were necessary because of individual student need, and this is the net. This is actually not all of the new positions that we put into this year's budget. That wasn't budgeted, but we needed to staff in this year's budget, but this is the net. We have two special education teachers, a half-time preschool teacher, nine full-time equivalent instructional assistants, a half-time school nurse, and the total net increase this current year, which needs to roll over into next year, is 12 full-time equivalent positions. That's significant. That's a lot of positions that need to roll over from this year into next year. We also have newly budgeted positions that need to go into next year's budget due to additional need. Again, these are net. Special ed teacher, one and a half instructional assistants, of course, the new Student Assistance Counselor, and the new HVAC maintenance specialist. Those new positions, and remember, this is net, is four and a half staffing positions, so that's what the increase is. As a result of all of this additional staffing, we're going to have to reduce some staff. And the reductions look like four teachers at the high school, and we looked at that in terms of where some of the lower-class sizes are, and as the kids start rolling up into next year's courses, Ms. Figur will make recommendations to myself and Mr. Volpe on where those positions are going to be reduced from. One transitional primary teacher, a TP teacher, for a total staff reduction of five positions. Now, I want to emphasize this. We're going to try to deal with these reductions through attrition, not through a process of reduction in force or having to norm-renew. We can't guarantee that, but we anticipate that that's how this is going to move forward. Why is this such a difficult budget? Well, behind me, what you're looking at is a chart from 29, 2010, which is almost eight years ago now, to next year's anticipated state aid increase. You can see that for the past seven years, for all intensive purposes, Hillsborough Township's state aid has been flat, has been flat during those years where costs continue to increase. And some of those costs that are outside of the board's control increases beyond 2%, which is our tax levied cap. So that creates a great deal of pressure on our district and on the local taxpayers. So as I mentioned before, there's a 2% cap on the levy. We can't raise any additional revenue than 2% from what the general fund levy was incurred here, and that increase is about $1.8 million. There is one exception, however, and that's in healthcare increases. So you can actually raise additional revenues through raising the levy or raising taxes as long as it is indexed to the state healthcare system. So the state went up 13 percentage points. We can write off 11% of our 15% increase. So we're not in the state health benefits plan. We're in a private plan, and that private plan went up 15%. We can pass along 11% of that increase to the taxpayers, but 4% of that increase, we have to eat within our existing budget. That healthcare waiver is about $1.7 million. So what does it mean for Hillsborough taxpayers? Or how much are my taxes going to go up? The annual increase for a home that's assessed at $400,000 will see their property taxes increase for the school part of that tax, which is the largest part of your property taxes, $9 for the year. That's it. Just $9. The levy is going up by 3.62%. However, due to ratable increases or greater taxable property, the impact on individual taxpayers is much, much less as we consider. So the rate increase is 1.605 current year to 1.607, which is the proposed tax rate for 2018. That increase is 14 hundredths of 1%. So it's less than 2 tenths of 1% increase. That's how much tax are going up in Hillsborough. But Hillsborough Township Public Schools is not just one community. We have another community that is part of our district, and that's Millstone. Millstone's levy increase is about the same, 3.8, a little bit higher. Their tax rate is going up much higher. Their rate is going up 4.45. Home that's assessed at $400,000 is going up $310 for the year for Millstone. What this chart shows behind me is a comparison of the budgetary cost per pupil, or the comparative cost per pupil, from the most recent data from the Department of Education comparing us to similar districts and the state average. So what we had charged in that particular year, our cost per pupil was about $15,000. The cost per pupil for the state average was $15.7, and the cost per pupil for similar districts to us was $15.5. When we look at total administrative costs, we see the same type of pattern. Hillsborough spends a little bit under $1,400 per pupil for administrative costs, where the state average is slightly below $1,700 per pupil. So what does that mean? Our spending is $750 less per pupil than the state average. So if we spent what the state average is, we would have to increase our budget by $5.4 million just to spend what the average per pupil expenditure is. So our tentative budget is in three different sections. The first is the general fund. That's what we pay for teachers and supplies and other things. That's going up a little bit more than 2%. Our grant and entitlements are typically budgeted at 85%. That's why you see it reduced by 14%. And our repayment of debt is going down by almost $800,000, a decrease of 21%. So our tentative budget is $129,865,587, an increase of $1.468 million, for a total increase in the budget for next year of 1.14%. Some key points to remember. Our focus, our new curriculum focus, is social studies. We are adding an additional Student Assistance Counselor. We're making additional investments in school security, and our final budget will be -- our final budget hearing is scheduled for Monday, April 30. And at this point, I'm available to answer any questions for the board, and of course for the other.
Any questions, Chris?
Yes, when you spoke about special education and the needs in that area in terms of what we added this year, I would assume that along with adding those to the course of the year, as new students are classified, that at the end of every year, some number of students graduate or otherwise age out of the school system, and that would release some individual aids. Is that part of the 12 that you had listed, or is that a --
That's all you're accounting for. Yeah, all the children that are graduating out or moving, leaving district that we know of have been accounted for here, and we have new children every year that come in.
Understood. I just want to make sure people understand that there are some that would age out, and that those aids, I would assume, cycle back in for the newly classified students. So there is some amount that comes back through.
I want to emphasize that the need is increasing, and the severity of some of our children that have disabilities is more severe in some cases. We're hiring more nurses, one-to-one nurses than we've had in the past. We have a very low percentage of students that are being sent out of district, and one of the reasons for that is that we make significant investments, close to half a million dollars. And one of the reasons for that is that we make significant investments, close to half a million dollars, to help address the needs of mental health concerns with our students. So that's a big help.
Thank you.
So I'm in favor of this budget today as... I joined the board in 2017, and prior to that, I... I talked with the superintendent. And I remember you saying that this 2% tax levy is untenable. I can see that here. In operations, we talked about the 2% is actually only on the portion that we levy. So the $25 million that we get from the state, we don't get 2% on that. So it's on whatever, if you don't mind going back, just I'm curious. Is that working out, or maybe it's not? Well, whatever it is, it's the 129 minus this 1.6 and whatever. So it's like 125 minus 25, so it's on 100 million or less, probably, right? So we are handkerchiefed. We need more money, right? So one of the things I thought about prior to coming here is there's the New Jersey School Board's Delegate Assembly. I feel like we almost need an emergency resolution requesting that Hillsborough be allowed to levy or raise its levy to match the state average. I mean, if we were to increase our levy to match the state average of what the state spends per student, that would give us an additional $5 million. I mean, the things that are added in the budget are great, student assistance counselor, et cetera. There are so many more things that we could offer that we just can't do in this budget. I mean, I hate to see that we are reducing staffing by five positions. I mean, every year, special education grows. And I think that it's really important for our town to share the costs for special ed. No doubt about that. But those costs are increasing faster than we can raise taxes, than we can raise our budget. I just feel like this situation is...
We actually do an all-in analysis on special education that includes out of district, tuition, related services, transportation, staffing, supplies, materials, all of it. That's going up about 4.4%. And that's a lot, especially when you can't raise the levy more than that. And I also wanna emphasize this. The investments that we make for children with disabilities are some of the most important investments that we should be making. So we've never been a state that says we educate some children at the expense of others. But unfortunately, due to the revenue constraints, the cap, state aid not coming in for seven years... And let me just point this out to you if I could. I'm just gonna go back to the chart. Take a look at the 2009, 2010 year. That year, we had a million dollars more in state aid. A million dollars more, and it's 10 years later. Nine years.
We need more money.
It is, we are on an unsustainable path. And I keep on saying that. And one of the things that we did to make this budget balance is to strip contingencies right out of it. And that's really hard to do. You can't do that every year.
Can our board attend or petition our state legislature? I mean, this is $25 million flat for over how many years? I mean, they're not giving us more money because we're making too. I'm so frustrated. I feel like this is, we're taxing to the maximum that we can, but we need more money. And I think it's paying taxes too, but we need more money.
And I also wanna focus in on Dr. Intunis's budget. There were so many extraordinary things that she put into that budget that could really help address the needs of all children. Extra help for kids at the high school. We even talked about a late bus in order for kids that need additional assistance to be able to get home without their parents having to pick them up. Because we know that if there are barriers in between needing the help and getting the help, they're not gonna get it. So we stripped out all of that. You know, our focus was to try to maintain what we currently have. We can barely do that.
So I'm asking the board, what can we do as our nine-member elected officials? What can we do to help the town raise more money? Can we go to the State School Boards Association with an emergency resolution and ask for it to be added to the, I guess, the handbook? I mean...
What would that resolution say?
The resolution was...
Specifically for Hillsborough, and you send it to the delegates.
For any district that is currently taxing its community at a rate less than the average state spending of whatever, we can't do that?
Well, you're on the right track, but it's not really... The correct metric isn't the average spending per student or anything like that. It has more to do with the state funding formula. And there is a number on the state funding formula that tells how much we should be taxing. Is that the adequacy?
It's called the local fair share.
Local fair share, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, that's the word I was, phrase I was starting from, local fair share. So we're quite a bit under the local fair share. That's the main driver of why we'll never see an increase in state aid. They're not gonna give more state aid when you're under your local fair share. Since the tax levy cap has gone to 2%, we've been at the maximum increase. We were below sometimes, but then over other times when you were allowed to do that. And you're still allowed to do that. But basically, since it's been at 2%, we've been completely at the maximum, not we can tax. Before that, when it was at 4%, there were some years where we were not at the maximum. But remember, we had to get budgets passed by the voter. We had to have that passed. Much better to do a budget with like a 3.5, a 3.6% tax levy increase than to go to 4% and fail and have the municipal body lower it down to 2.5 or 3%.
Look at 2010 in this chart. And that's exactly what happened. $17 million that...
At 2010, we taxed the 4% tax levy cap at that time. We took about another 2% in a healthcare waiver for 6%. And the budget failed, and we went back down to about 4%. Those are the breaks.
So Greg, I had my terminology wrong. Thank you.
Local fair share is more the terminology.
So can we draft a resolution to present as an emergency resolution to the Delegate Assembly that meets in May to have Hillsborough... So that they can advocate on all school boards' behalf at the state legislature that school boards that are taxing below local fair share raise their tax levy in a gradual way that they could mean to achieve local fair share. I mean, that would, even a couple hundred thousand dollars would make a huge difference in our budget. And if there's so many things that the public has asked us to do that we just don't have the money for. I mean, I could list, like, I mean, you won't see the emails.
It's not, can I speak?
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea. The tax levy cap is not designed for growing towns that are adding ratables. It's designed for towns, rooms that are built out. And they're not adding any more ratables, so they very much appreciate it with the tax levy cap. You saw Dr. Shepherd's presentation say that our, you know, that the annual increase on an average home is gonna be $9 a year. I've been on the board for 11 years. That's the lowest I've ever seen. There are also an increase of the tax rate of 14, 100%. I remember a couple of years when ratables were growing. My first on the board 10 years ago, we had a couple of years where we had a half a percent increase for two years in a row. I thought that was tremendous. We'd never see that again. But the town is still growing. So I think there is some legitimacy to changing the tax levy cap. It's very painful for me to say that. But also, I think the resistance will be that there are mechanisms to go above the tax levy cap by going direct to the voters. And that will be the resistance. I'll come back and say, no, if you wanna do that, there are things you could strip out of your budget that you could go directly to the voters in November and ask for it with a referendum. You can't just say, oh, we want to just raise money. But there are specifics. I'm not up on all of them. Maybe Mr. Remu knows more about that. But that might be where you get your resistance. I'll say, put a referendum out for November and ask for more.
I understand that. I think part of bringing an emergency resolution to the School Boards Association is to bring attention to our situation. I mean, I don't think that the general public under, I mean, I didn't before when I was sitting on that side. I didn't understand why clubs couldn't be funded more fully, why sports, et cetera. It just, there's no money. Like, I see the budget, and there's no money. I'm reading line items, and it's like everything is taken up by the must-haves. And then we can't allocate money for infrastructure, et cetera. I just feel like bringing it to, and they may reject it if we bring a resolution to them, and they may say, well, it's handled just as you said in November. But at least it's bringing the conversation to the table that there's 580-some-odd school boards that attend. They don't all attend, but, you know, large majority, quite a few attend. That you can have discussion with your fellow school board members. Now, it won't be until May, so it won't really help us with this budget, but it'll help us in the future. So that would be my proposal to, but we have to act quickly.
So let me see, one last thing, and I'll be shut, because I wanna dominate this issue. So I agree with Gina on one thing that you're sort of hitting at when you said, when you're talking about the urgency. This is the only budget that will be able to pass like this. We won't be able to do this again next year, and I'll tell you why. Normally, the normal way to budget for wage increases is to budget for the on-paper wage increase, which this year, for most employees, is, I think, 2.5% generally. So in every other year, there have been more, where we budget for 2.5%. Some hired salaried employees leave at the end of the year. New employees that are lower salary come on. There's a difference there. Sometimes it's about a half a percent, from about 2.5 to about 2. This year, it's so dire with our needs that we have that Mr. Remu budgeted for what he projected to be our actual wage increase, which is just under 2%. So what this means is that at the end of the year, when we usually make a deposit into our capital reserve account to use for maintenance, bigger maintenance capital projects that we do, we won't be able to do that 14 months from now or 15 months from now. This year, we'll be able to. So we'll be able to do some maintenance projects that we need to do for this year, because we'll be able to make a deposit on the surplus that we generate this year. But we'll never do that again. This is it for this budget. This is a one-time deal. Something will have to change next year. As you know, I'm not an advocate for larger class sizes. I'm not an advocate for lower teacher pay. We can't do that anyway. I'm not an advocate for any of that. I'm an advocate for highly-paid teachers, highly-qualified everybody, and as low as class sizes as we can get. So something's gonna happen.
If I could just say that, I really appreciate Mr. Gillette's discussion on this is unsustainable. We cannot continue to move in this direction. We are, one of the ways to deal with it, as Mr. Gillette indicated, is that a question on the ballot. But here's how this works. And this was a new law that came into effect when the school budgets were no longer voted on, when we moved our elections to November. The second question goes on the ballot in November, which is already into that year. And then you don't, if it passes, the monies don't come in until January or the middle of that year. So you can't raise funds for things like teaching staff members during that. Plus, you can't put on the ballot what they call T and E, or thorough and efficient parts of your budget. Thorough and efficient is your curriculum, your teaching staff, other things. You can't put a second question on for full-day kindergarten if it's an addition to what you currently have. You can put preschool on, you can put other things. But we have to be very thoughtful about what we would do on a second question. The solution to this is to return control to local school boards. You people are the best people to determine what a community can and can't afford. This year in particular, with an average increase that's, for all intensive purposes, flat, and yet we're cutting five teachers. You should have that decision-making authority about what this community can and cannot afford. That choice has been taken away from you. And that's the biggest argument that should be made to our legislators, the governor, and the Department of Education. Chris, do something.
Unfortunately, I'd like to continue on the debate of not sustainable. Since I've been on this board often, not since 2002, budgetary constraints have continuously made it nearly impossible for us to do the maintenance that we should do in a preventative sense. And we always end up being reactionary to problems. For example, our current problem with the schools with lead in the water. We're reacting to that as opposed to something we might have been able to do preventively. Can you speak to what is or is not in this budget regarding maintenance, in terms of building maintenance? And is that potentially something in the arena of the second question?
We're gonna have to have a construction referendum. There's no doubt. With the needs that we have with HVAC, we cannot put it in to our general fund. And we can't hope, as Mr. Gillette indicated, that we'll be able to have surpluses each year to put into a capital reserve. We received a report from Aramark, a facilities conditioning report, that indicated that we have a lot of work to do in terms of HVAC, controls, roofs, boilers, some other things that will have to go out to a referendum for. That's one part. But the other, but that's not the general fund. That's debt service for construction. We also need some flexibility on our general fund as well.
So can I... Can I move the board's, I'm not sure exactly, Mr. Remu, if you could help me. May I move that the Hillsborough Township School Board draft a resolution to submit as an emergency resolution to the New Jersey State School Boards Association to the effect of what Mr. Gillette said regarding the 2% cap not being designed for growing towns and requesting that towns that are under their local fair share be allowed to tax up to as, up to fair share as determined by their school boards, something to that effect? You know, that's not quite...
Mr. Reed, you certainly can make a motion like that. We would probably try to, like, I mean, bring it to a defined motion so that the board has a clear direction of what the motion is, and then we can pass it.
So as in write it out?
Yeah, it would be something that we'd have to write out, that the board has clear direction.
What is the deadline for these proposals?
I think it's soon. I think it's before our next meeting. I can tell you. I believe it is April 4th.
That's before our next meeting.
So basically, what I'm hearing from Mr. Trillo is for this board to advocate the 2% cap removal for any district that is below their local fair share.
Something to that effect. And I'll write it out. I'll just borrow, I'll just use this.
Well, we have Mr. Lapira, who's here writing fair share to my right, just as on cue.
But not to remove the, kind of, the cap, just allow us to make an exception to get to the local fair share, and then the cap can carry us pursuant to leaving if that's what that's for.
And here's the craziness about the cap and local fair share. If you're capped at 2% and your local fair share is above, that you're not taxing above the 2, or the difference between where the state feels your local fair share is and where you are, if that's greater than 2%, you may never get there. You may never get to local fair share, because local fair share continues to move.
Before I vote on any proposed resolution, I'd like to understand better, because I was not in the operations committee, and so I didn't hear the discussion about local fair share that the operations committee discussed. So if we would make this resolution, what are we potentially talking about with respect to how much money would bring us up to local fair share? And obviously, we wouldn't have to go the whole way.
So this actually doesn't do anything. It really only brings it in front of the State School Boards Association, which would then, if the body that needs as a delegate assembly approves it, it would then go as part of their policy on what they advocate for in the New Jersey State Legislature. So it doesn't mean that we would automatically get it.
I understand that, but still, the question remains, how far are we below local fair share? And what would that mean to our taxpayers if, in fact? I don't wanna advocate for something for people to make this available and then, in the end, not wanna vote for it. So I just wanna understand.
Yeah, if you look at the state aid numbers, it tells you about our local fair shares. Last year, we were undertaxing by approximately 6.7, I think, really. Is my recollection?
6.7 million.
Million, below local fair share.
And the resolution doesn't have to say that we go up to the max. It just gives us some space.
Well, I don't think anyone would. But the question is, you know, would you go up enough not to have to cut five teachers, which could increase the levy by, I don't know, $20?
Does give us the ability to work with something.
Let...
Go ahead.
This needs to be, with everyone's approval. So likely, one of the motions could be, be resolved that the Hillsborough Board of Education petitioned the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly to advocate for a change to the law to permit an exception to the 2% capital tax levy for districts that are taxing under the local fair share.
Can I also suggest that not just go to the... Can I also suggest that not just go to the school board assembly, but that copies of that resolution will be shared with our assemblyman and senator, as well as the commissioner of education.
Just a quick question, the format of the resolutions looks like whereas all this stuff, do we need that for now, or we have to pretty it up to?
Well, if we do, we'll do it now, but we, so let me say the following, the purpose of doing that is because when you present the resolution, you have an explanation as to why you're passing the resolution. The beauty of what we have here with YouTube and having all of our meetings recorded is that all of the rationale for why we're passing it is being reported, so we can do a simpler resolution, because that's, I mean, it looks nice when it's very formulaic.
That big W?
We don't usually do it, but it would look nice.
Sounds so much better than pretty.
So I would say, be a result of Hillsborough Board of Education petitioning the New Jersey School Boards delegate assembly, as well as its state legislators and the commissioner of education, to permit an exception to the 2% cap, or to advocate for a change to the law to permit an exception to the 2% cap on a tax levy for districts that are taxing under the local fair share.
So I move that resolution?
Second, yes.
I think we'll take a roll call on that.
Ms. Bogdsky, thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Balsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sossan?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
And Mrs. House?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Unanimously. That's correct. Okay. Are there any other questions? Would that budget please be questioned?
Because we have, we have public... Do you want to move on the...
Is there a question?
Comment from the public, right?
Well, committee reports.
No, no, I do, I do comments from the public on budget, yeah.
I was sort of hoping to do the committee reports. So, I mean, hopefully, hopefully that'll take a short period of time, but that way we can move right into, you know, input on the budget, and input on the agenda, and get it all done at one time. So, committee reports.
So the education committee, that last Tuesday, and our first order of business was that we approved the book Heat Performance, which is a book about the science of, the science and attitudes, I guess, regarding power of heat, top performance. Very interesting book, and that's going to be in English, not in, we were all trying to guess what the book was going to be used for, I think we all had different ideas. It could be used in multiple courses though, which is great. The next topic of discussion was the extracurricular varsity letter, so as, I don't see any red shirts here, but we've, for many years, I think now, have, there's been a proposal to allow extracurricular inter-scholastic teams to earn academic varsity letters, and we have been waiting for a policy from Strasés May to be able to bring that to the board, so that we could sort of do it in the order in which it was intended, that we have a policy, and then, and then criteria could be written, but because the likelihood is that we may not get the policy in place before the end of the year, and we don't want our outgoing seniors to not benefit from this, we discussed with Ms. Finger and Mr. Davis, their opinions. Ms. Finger did a lot of work at the request of Dr. Schiff, and based on our board discussion, and discussed, sent out a questionnaire to all of the extracurricular inter-scholastic teams, and basically asked certain criteria about amount of time that children spend, that students spend on them, and basically to determine whether or not they felt that their participants could be in need or could earn a varsity letter, because what we didn't want to do is provide a varsity letter to everybody, and thereby dilute the importance of achievement. Interestingly, there were only four teams that came back that said that they thought that they should earn a varsity letter, those were Mock Trial, Model Congress, Model UN, and Robotics. So the education committee discussed that, we're all in agreement, and so the superintendent said that they could take care of that administratively, if the board were in agreement, that we eventually would put a policy in place that would support that. So the education committee unanimously recommends that the board agree that the administration should build criteria for those particular, those four particular inter-scholastic teams to be able to earn varsity letters, and do it such that they can earn them this year. And that would mean that even if their season were over, and they already have their closing banquet, or whatever they do at the end of it, that they could still, before the end of the school year, earn a varsity letter. And the criteria that we set forth, and we would put forth in the policy, was that they would be significant contribution, distinguished service, over a sustained period of time. So this would not be just, you join the team, you get a letter, it would be that you would have to earn it, similar to the way varsity athletes contribute to their team, and the success of the team in order to earn their varsity letters. So that was much appreciated with respect to the discussion, and Ms. Finger and Mr. Davis's participation in that as well. We also reviewed the budget, which we just heard about, so I won't spend any time on it, but basically it was cut, 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 to get to this point that we just heard. And we also discussed the calendar and the meet for the open schools on Take Your Child Work Day, which has already been sent out to the community, that it will be a half-day, so we'll have two half-days in the book. Right, and that half-day would be a half-day in-service for teachers at the end of the day as well. So that's it for me. Go ahead, Greg.
Operations committee met on March 20th. We saw Dr. Schiff's presentation that we saw tonight, we had some discussion about that, some of which we're, there's a discussion we had tonight. We talked about potential air conditioning, I'm going to say it again, air conditioning, but this, this might be for a sunny-beat school architect who's looking at it now, and we'll have more to say about it when the architect review is done. We talked about our arrangement with municipal government for using the space at the municipal building, where that discussion about that is ongoing. Our new architect, EI, he might have a date with three proposals, I believe, three proposals. One is to take a look at the condition of the basement at HES. The other, second one is to look at the, let me see. Yeah, is to take, do another evaluation of our 16 to 19 million dollar ESIP program, which went through a couple of years ago, which is now completed. And the third item was to, was to review the, from an architect's point of view, the facilities assessment report that we received from Aramark, and that which is committed was amenable to all of those proposals from EI, and they had some, each of those had some dollar amounts with them. Also, we had a proposal from our, from our building grounds supervisor, what do you call it, supervisor, director, director, there you go, to, well, let's put it this way, we've had many different environmental consultants over the last few years, their suggestion was to hire, not EI, EDI, as our main environmental consultant going forward, they're the same company that did the testing for the leg, the second company that did the leg, we were very pleased with the services they provided for that, and he suggested that we contract with them as our main environmental consultant moving forward, and operations committee was in favor of that. We talked about the, and you heard a little bit about this in the budget, we talked about the healthcare premium increases coming up, we had some suggestions for Brandon Brown to go back to Horizon Blue Cross, and see what they can do about the expected premium increase, things like wellness plans or other plans they have available that we know in the private sector, they have different wellness opportunities for people to lower their premiums, and we never seem to hear about that for our employees, as a possibility for our employees. So we're sending Brandon Brown back to Horizon. Now, you heard Dr. Schiff talk about the state health benefits plan increasing 13% our plan, projected to go up this year 15%, he said, well, why don't we just go back to the state health benefits plan, so I go 13. Well, we don't necessarily pay the same rates right now that the state health benefit plan charges, it's a little more complicated than that, it also is complicated in the fact that the state health benefits plan, 13% rate, that's for, just before the half of the year, because they changed their rates six months apart from where we change our rates. So Brandon Brown thought it was better to lock in at 15%, but like I said, we're going to go back to them. And then we took, we looked at some policies for first reading that are on tonight's agenda, and there's nothing earth-shattering about those, those are just some revisions to policies that we have in common. I think that was, we had, also had Kathy Major, not Kathy Major, I forgot her name, from Sidexo, she's still Kathy Major, come in from Sidexo and talk about our food service options, especially at the high school. Okay, that's all.
Yes, Greg.
Can I just clarify about the Sunny Bee air conditioner, is it self-funded, not funded by the board?
No, it's just a potential donation that we're, that we're looking at, but we asked the architect to take a look at it, because we had so much angst about air conditioning last year, that before we even accept any donation, we want them to review.
And in the absence of Diva Centafanti, I'll give the HR report, which is actually quite simple, unfortunately. The HR committee met on March 12th and reviewed close to a million dollars' worth of budget cuts that were very, you know, upsetting, and are now reflected in this budget. So we also discussed a few policies which will be on the next board meeting. So that's the HR report. It's always best for HR, the delegate confidential matters, but that was the HR committee report. So are there any questions and comments on committee reports among the board, board members? Okay, then I guess we can go to comments from the, we can go to comments from the board, from the public on the 2018 budget, which will be followed by public input on the action agenda. But I first want to say that we very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak, one time is right now, that you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there's another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or an inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. I'd also like to say that, may the record please reflect that the Board of Education does not endorse comments, nor will the Board of Ed be held liable for comments made about staff members, that the staff member may consider defamatory and/or libelous, as that staff member retains all rights to pursue legal remedies against the speaker. So please consider your comments carefully. With that said, I welcome Ms. Amy.
Hi, thank you, Amy Salmister. I teach at Otten Road Intermediate School, and I am the Hope for Education Association treasurer. I had a whole list of things I wanted to say, but Mr. Hio totally stole my thunder. I don't know if you remember, I don't remember what year it was, it was either 2010, 11, where I actually came up, I grew up at the high school when all those state aid cuts were deep and hurt, and I talked, and I tried, you know, I just gave examples of other boards of Ed appealing to the state and writing resolutions, because at the very least, even if we don't get anything from it, it shows that we, as Hillsborough community, believe in it, and we feel it's needed, and we'll do whatever we can to the best of our ability to try to get that. So thank you to Mr. Hio, and thank you to all of you for passing the resolution. I hope it helps us, I think it's long overdue, and I was just really happy to hear that, and I wanted to share that with you all, so thank you.
May I just say, you know, it occurs to me that 94% of districts in the state did receive a 3% to 5% increase, and Hillsborough is part of the lucky 6% in part that didn't receive anything. So yes, we are doing this resolution, but it's not likely to have an effect for this year, unfortunately, but people in the audience here, and in the television audience, may feel free to write to the state legislature and the governor about whether or not it's appropriate for Hillsborough to be part, Hillsborough comma, a growing community with a lot of needs and a lot of children, should be part of 6% of districts in the state that has 600 school districts, and not receiving any...
I believe, we were the only one in Somerset County too, I believe that was flat. I'm going to call it a 0% increase is what we got. So I think, again, making the public aware is also good, because the more community support we get with something like this, people writing, whatever we can do, I think it's worth it, and hopefully we'll see some positive things, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Can I just state before the next speaker comes up, that the median increase in the state of New Jersey this year for state aid was 5%. 5% increase on how a state aid would have been, 1.25 million.
Komakara, 44 French drive. I also have the Shanduka Kappa.
10 Miller drive.
10 French drive. So, good evening, board members. First of all, we want to thank you for all that you do. We're here today representing a larger group of Hillsborough Township parents and residents to discuss our concerns with the safety and security measures in HTPS. A letter was also emailed to the board members on March 14th, which included two requests from us, the first one being, there are multiple districts which have sent communications to parents with a comprehensive list of safety and security measures currently in place, and the improvements that are being planned for the schools. So we'd like to understand why HTPS has not shared this information with parents, and we would like to see a comprehensive list being sent out and communicated to the parents. Is there a timeline for doing so? Will there be such a communication sent to the parents?
I started out my superintendent's presentation with a list of eight or nine different things that we're currently doing in terms of school security, and that is exclusive of things that we already have available in our district. Our district, and probably most of the community doesn't realize this, we have some of the most sophisticated surveillance equipment in the entire county. Every year, the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office hosts a gathering of law enforcement officials and school leaders to discuss and share best practices. Three years ago, we presented on our surveillance equipment, and this allows for real-time access to our law enforcement partners if there is an emergency, or if the school is broken into at times. Ours is a model that... Every year, the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office hosts a gathering of law enforcement officials and school leaders to discuss and share best practices. Three years ago, we presented on our surveillance equipment. And this allows for real-time access to our law enforcement partners if there is an emergency or if the school is broken into at times. Ours is a model that other districts follow. We have key card on all of our buildings, we have IDs that are available, things that some of our community vendors certainly would know and understand, because their students at the high school also have IDs that are available. There are a litany of things that are, that help to ensure that the people who enter into our schools are the right people who should be in our schools. That doesn't mean you can't do things better. And one of the things that we have discussed and frankly debated is, should we be making these decisions right off the cuff based upon, based upon suggestions from the community? Or should we be vetting it through people who are professionals, who have expertise in the area of school security and different practices that give us the best opportunity to make sure that our schools are safe for our kids? We've decided to gather up all the information. The letter that you sent to us listed a whole variety of different ideas. That is a part of what we have heard already from parents and from students and other community members, from board members. And all of that information, we're giving to our private consultants who are going to be our partners in this. I think it's very prudent to make sure that people who have expertise in this area advise the board appropriately versus hoping that this is the right thing to do, whatever that right thing is. So, it's a deliberative process, it's not that we're not being transparent about it. Certainly, we're not going to share with the community particular vulnerabilities or other things, because we're not publicizing any of those things. But that's why you have consultants that come on in to share their expertise and give us good advice that we can do things that really make a difference.
Thank you for that update, Superintendent. That did bring me to our next point that we had was, President Haas had informed us that you were looking into getting that assessment completed with a service provider. So, the question that we have is, the improvements that do come out of that assessment, will they be communicated to the parents?
The specific recommendations on that particular report, you know, it's interesting that you bring that up. There is a carve-out on the Open Public Meetings Act that allows for school boards to discuss school security matters that are specific in executive session rather than in public session. And the reason that there's that cutout is, we don't want to inform someone who wishes ill intent against our children to know anything more than they absolutely have to know. So, we're protective of that, because we're protective of our kids, but we do have a responsibility to be specific enough to let the community know and understand how we're hardening our schools, how we're taking particular steps in terms of providing additional visibility, which I announced today with the police. In fact, police were in, were in a school that, that all of the, almost all of the administrators in the district participated in a instructional rounds process. And we were at HES today, all day long, and we actually observed ourselves, a police officer walking through the hallways. And we're doing that not just to be visible, but for the community to understand that when police are in our schools, it's not necessarily a problem, that they are partners in making sure that we're safe, that our officers walk through the hallways, get high-fives from the kids, get thanks yous from the staff, they feel comfortable, we feel comfortable with them, and that the community knows that when a police officer is at a school, that's just typical, that's routine.
I understand. And we understand that there's sensitive material that cannot be communicated to the public. On the flip side, I think there are things that can be improvements, which, you know, communicating those to the public may act as deterrents if others are to know that certain.
Agreed. Absolutely agree. It's one of the reasons why I just talked about the surveillance equipment tonight, because if someone doesn't wish to be caught doing something, they won't come to Hillsborough Township Public Schools.
Okay, it's good to know, thank you. In addition to those two requests, we also had, as you mentioned, some suggestions, a list of suggestions in our email letter. We've included here a few of those suggestions. Our first one, and I think this is, and we feel this should be a priority, is a school resource officer in all schools. So, recently, recent reports have NJSP stating that municipal cops deployed in schools with specific training to protect, teach, and mentor students is the preferred model for school safety. In the last couple of weeks as well, we've had Somerset County Freeholder Directors announcing and urging Somerset County schools to enhance their security. And from the Mount memory Township website, I'm taking a quote from one of the directors stating, "I understand that budgets are tight, but when it comes to making our schools safer, we don't have, the money is not an acceptable excuse." This is about priorities. Being that we've had recent events, more frequent events as we're seeing them, I do urge the board members to please take that into consideration. And I know that our entire group, who was, who co-signed the letter, 65 members, feels the same way.
And certainly something we'll give consideration to as we move through our process.
Thank you. Some of the other suggestions we've added were to, for the board to consider retrofitting the current infrastructure with attack-resistant doors and windows. Our email also provides additional detail on this line item, as well as mental health, education, training, and awareness for teachers. Again, as we've seen with recent events, that is a very important aspect and where focus should be. So, this is also training for students and school administrators.
And that's an area we do a great deal of work in, and we've made significant investments in this district to monitor, assist, and identify children who are at risk or who need mental health supports.
Thank you. Lastly, we want to, again, ask the board to please communicate out those suggestions that you are considering and that you do decide to move forward with based on the assessment and have that frequently communicated to the residents and the parents of Hillsborough Township. Thank you.
Good evening, Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Ward Drive. I just had a couple of questions regarding the budget, but first and foremost, I'd like to echo the sentiments that Amy shared. We do appreciate the steps taken by the board to perhaps further, or at least to not initiate the conversation regarding the shortfalls that our budget has experienced. So, thank you for taking the lead on that one. I also would like to echo some of the concerns that Mr. Pulsifer raised regarding preventative maintenance and its presence within this plan. You know that during budget season, one of the, you know, annual things that I typically bring up is our buildings and grounds, the fact that it's my belief that they're understaffed compared to other districts, and that our preventative maintenance does suffer for that at times. Now, in the course of that conversation with the budget, there was mention of the plan that I believe Aramark prepared, correct? And did that plan include preventative maintenance?
It included a lot of construction projects that were, that spanned roofs, boilers, there was controls, HVAC, mechanical type of things. Was there preventative maintenance?
Nothing in detail as far as the outline of preventative maintenance, Henry, but we are relying on the architect that's going, as Mr. Gillette said, that's going to take that document and sort of dissect it. And I'm, this is the request that we're making of the architect, is to build in, not just assessing what they put together on this document, but also what would lead to making sure that we are taking care of the infrastructure and that these preventative maintenance issues are being taken care of. The architects that the board has selected seem like they have this large array of experience in PM, so we're hoping that they can guide the board. They are separate from Aramark, they're separate from the facilities piece, they're going to assess it, and I think they're going to come back with sort of, in my opinion, a more methodical way in which we can handle our PMs.
Excellent, and I appreciate you getting feedback on that from a new firm. But it does sound like some of the areas that would be addressed in this, it'd be fair to say, preventative maintenance is in some way connected to them, correct? Because you mentioned HVAC, boiler, those types of things, which typically do have, you know, annual or at least quarterly preventative maintenance associated with them, correct?
Yes.
And who is it that we've hired to oversee preventative maintenance within the district?
It would be Aramark. Aramark does that for us.
Thank you. So, in this agenda, as I looked over the billing part of it and reflected on the hard decisions that we have to make during the budget, I heard somewhere to the tune of close to a million dollars worth of cuts, we're looking at five staff members, we are adding some very needed things. Again, I do appreciate the work that went into this, but I also do have concern related to the fact that we are perhaps still going along with an issue that involves a preventative maintenance. And where I found this illustrated was, in particularly, the amount that we have budgeted for core in our bills for this section, who is the company that deals with many of the HVAC issues that we have, there is a line item for $177,739.55 listed in there for core, and there's also another one for $35,873.96 to Aramark, for a total of $213,613.51. That's approximately a fifth of what we had to make hard decisions regarding. So, I certainly, again, appreciate the work that's been done, but I would ask that as we continue to have these conversations, we think about making those investments in our district, to staffing in our district, to the needs of our district, not to necessarily the outside companies in our district. Think about adding more B&amp;G people, adding one is an act, that's a first step that has not occurred in, I think, five to six years. So, again, I do appreciate that. I'm not disparaging that or looking down on it in any way, but I think it's only the start, we need to add more. And when you look at those numbers and consider the cuts that we had to make and the hard decisions that we've all had to share, I think that that really does highlight the need to reconsider some of these things. Thank you.
Henry, before you scoot, just to make it public with the board and with the community, Henry and I have been in discussions about writing a joint letter to the governor, to the state, to the state commissioner, indicating that having an increase in state aid when our per pupil expenditure is so far beneath the average, that our increase is, for all intents and purposes, zero, is unacceptable. And that needs to change. There's lots of legitimate concerns about how we slice up the pie for state aid, but for eight years in a row, not to have an increase of any substantial kind is not prioritizing our students. And we should be able to prioritize all students in the state of New Jersey. And the failure to do so is very disappointing indeed. So, I appreciate the collaborative effort in trying to, in trying to rectify this.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate you mentioning that, Dr. Schiff, and your willingness to join us in sending that letter. If this board is willing to take action, we're willing to stand with you on that to address this with the state. So, thank you.
Good evening, Bob Fenster, Hillsborough High School. First, before I get to the main thing I wanted to talk about, I wanted to thank the education committee and especially the robotics team for stepping up and getting the varsity letter thing done, something that I've been trying to do literally since 1998. So, I'm glad that they have the numbers to make the difference. My question or my subject that I want to ask about and comment, if I can just get one question answered, is 12.5 on the action agenda, is this a new way of doing things or is this just something that's done annually that I haven't seen before with regard to travel expenses and a cap of $105,000?
So, Mr. Fenster, that is, we're required by code every year, if you look at the prior years, when we submit the budget, that is a requirement, and we put in that resolution with the tentative budget. The county office, and when they review our budget, is one of the requirements. We are, the number that we put in there just for education purposes, the board doesn't come near that level of expenditure. So, I think it's 105 or so, that we are well within that, and we've been asked that question, the board has asked repeatedly, you know, where are we in terms of that number? So, the board has well below that number, so we don't exceed that or even come close to it.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. I mean, I did, I did do number crunching based on the three months of this year, and it was $37,000 total, which if you take out the summertime, it's, what does, under it, but not by month, actually, not under. If the expenditures were the same for the other six or seven months of the school year, they probably aren't, but if they were, it would actually put us over $105,000. And I haven't done math, and I don't know if you have those, you probably don't have those numbers at the ready. But one thing that did jump out at me when I was looking at the numbers, Dr. Schiff was just talking about prioritization or priorities, and I'm not trying to disparage anything that has been, that has been spent, money that's been spent, I don't know, most of these endeavors, but I did notice that of the $37,000, more than half of it, in fact, I have the numbers elsewhere, it doesn't really matter, but it was something like $20,000 to the $37,000, was for administrators getting professional development or speaking at conferences, and far less than that was for staff members and teachers. And considering the pool of administrators and the pool of staff members, I would ask the board to at least consider, if we ever do get close to those numbers, only if we ever get close to those numbers, that some thought be put into whether or not the most bang for the buck is being spent for a small group of people. And you've already answered my question about the 105, and I'll stop because of the bell, which I applaud, I just hope you would force it more often. Thank you.
Are there any more comments on the budget or on the action agenda from the public? Seeing none, I will hand over to the superintendent for the action agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve traveling-related expenses, the head determination lists, overnight field trips, textbooks, the staff approvals for the eating kindergarten registration, and the adoption of a policy for first reading administration of school service.
Okay, we have a motion for items 10.1 through 10.6, please. Thank you. Second, thank you. Okay, are there any questions and comments among the board members on the education agenda? Seeing none, I will call.
Surely, Mr. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kilburn?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Fasson?
Yes.
Mr. Hillel?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to approve the resolution to create one inclusive cheer coach position, to approve retirements and resignations as attached. I would also like to identify Colleen Casalvo, teacher of writing for Woodfern, whose retirement is effective July 1, 2018, who has worked in this district since 1994. Thank you so much for the service that you have provided to the children in Hillsborough Township Public Schools. Also to approve the leaves of absences as listed, the revised long-term substitutes, the approve the leaves of absences, approve the appointments of an instructional assistant, a long-term substitute, a coach, and the substitutes as attached. Also, a motion to approve the appointments for the 18, 19 school year of a long-term substitute. Approve six-period coverage and pre-approve extra-period coverage, as well as the approval of extra-period coverage. Motion to approve group changes and to approve the payment stipend for the earning of the doctoral degree for Dr. Suzanne Radwan.
First, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Suzanne Radwan. It's not easy to get a doctorate, and we're very proud of her achievement. Anyway, may I have a motion for a human resources agenda, 11.1 through 11.12? Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Any comments, questions about the action agenda on human resources? the Action Agenda on Human Resources?
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Dr. Fasson?
Yes.
Mr. Hia?
Yes.
Mrs. Hops?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of Operations to approve line-on transfers, monthly bills lists, approve the tentative budget for the 2018-2019 school year, also to approve the health benefits waiver, to approve travel expense reimbursement, and approve policies for first reading, including lead testing in water in schools, electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds, and bus driver, bus aid responsibility. Also, approve a settlement and accept a donation from the HSA, I believe that's Sunny Bay, no, I'm sorry, that's the middle school?
Middle school.
The middle school for the purchase of, and installation of three filtered water dispensers.
Water filling stations.
Water filling stations at a cost of approximately $8,300.
Okay. I'd just like to point out that item 12.3 also includes this amendment, which was on your places when you got here. That's subsumed in those numbers. So, I will take a motion for the Operations Agenda, items 12.1 through 12.8.
So moved.
Thank you. Greg, second. Greg? Okay. Any questions or comments on any of those items? Yes, Greg?
I just want, I just want to reiterate again what the tentative budget is. I'm sure we all know by now, but it's the budget that has to be submitted to the Executive County Superintendent, just to show that we have a plan to raise enough money. We don't, you know, we have a plan to tax, to spend. The actual items that Dr. Schiff talked about today, we'll go over those again. We passed the full budget, and it's possible that some of those things can change. I don't think it's likely. There's no wiggle room this year to change anything, but when, what we state at the next budget, the hires and the different things, that would be what we're going to do, for sure. This is, this is just to get the tax levy set and the other appropriations.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other comments? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Dr. Fasson?
Yes.
Mr. Hia?
Yes.
Mrs. Hops?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We have an informational item, and then we go to comments from the board and public on old business.
I have some comments.
Yes.
So, regarding the letter that Dr. Schiff and Mr. Hia were writing, can the board, though, join in on that letter?
I think that was something that we talked about, that the board is interested in participating in that. Of course, we'll show you a draft, you know, before it's sent out.
Oh, so you don't have to decide now, but can I move that the board votes on adding its signature as a joint body? Another motion?
To vote on participating in a joint letter.
Okay, fine. That would be fun. I think we should see the letter.
I don't know what that is.
I'm not comfortable voting until actually any board votes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
May I file with us, sign off on it?
So, then we can actually use our title. We can actually say that it's, so the clarification that I have is, when we write a letter to the editor, et cetera, we have to clarify that we are speaking on our own behalf. So, in this letter, would we also be only speaking on our own behalf?
Right.
But I do not speak for the entire board.
You can speak into the mic.
Right. You could identify the fact that you're a board, but if the whole board hasn't voted on it yet, technically isn't coming from the board. But still, I think it has an impact if you have multiple board members signing off on it, and the superintendent and the HEA, I think it has the same impact.
We just have to clarify that we don't speak for the entire board in that letter?
I don't know. I have to take a look at it. Maybe you-
Okay. I have some other comments, Judy, if you don't mind. So, last weekend, I attended Triangle's school basketball auction. It was a lot of fun. I was over at the Falcons' Nest, and I was just so amazed. The Home and School Association parents did an amazing job, and there were so many Triangle's teachers that were there, and the awesomest part was that Mrs. Heather Suzula, who's a Woods Road third-grade teacher, is their Home and School Association president. So, I just thought that was fantastic, that our teachers are doing awesome things. And then, this weekend, I went to watch the Roper Raiders compete down in Montgomery, and they were, it was just a very exciting competition, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Christos Papopoulos and the parent vendors for their dedication to the students. I mean, it is a labor of love. There are some of the parent vendors whose kids have graduated 10 years now, and they continue to come back and help the team. And I also want to congratulate, because the red shirts aren't here, I want to congratulate the team for qualifying the Mid-Atlantic Regional Competition at Lehigh University in early April. And finally, actually, she's not here tonight, but I saw Mrs. Kitty Moore at Montgomery, and so she is a mentor parent, but she's an alumni mentor parent, because her son, I think, graduated years ago for 100 and Central Regional High School's Team 3637 at Dallak, which you, I didn't know what it was, but I guess it's Dr. Booth. So, she said you would know about it. And, but their team won Chairman's Award at Montgomery because it's the highest honor of the competition, so I want to congratulate 100 and Central Regional High Schools robotics team.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then, any other comments?
I just think it's important to note that Team 3637, the first team incorporates and gives the team a number based upon when they're incorporated. Their 3637, Hillsborough Township Public Schools Roper Raider, 75. That tells you about-
Been around a long time.
One of the longest-
That's right. We are the, what I understood is Hillsborough High Schools is the oldest robotics team in New Jersey. It was a pretty fun competition.
What's the next competition?
Lehigh in early April for the Mid-Atlantic Regionals. So, fingers crossed if they move on to Detroit.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, you're not going to abstain, so we're adjourned.